Hey, how you doing buddy? Okay, let's call this meeting to order. It is six thirty-two. Could I get a roll call please?
Harper. Ingram.
Yep.
McGuire. Patterson. Rector. Store. Summers. Taylor.
Here.
Thoroslin.
Here.
Tinsley.
Present.
Wolken.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Clemmons.
Here.
Clifford. Covert. Dillard Myers. Eisenman. Ezri.
Here.
Portato. Goss.
Here.
Rosales.
Here. Seek approval of the agenda and addendum. Moved by Covert, seconded by Ezri. Any comments, questions, deletions, additions? Seeing none?
Hold up, hold up here. I think, I don't know for sure, second page, third page. Underneath E, designation of item to be placed on a consent agenda. Is that an extra X of a business? It's in there twice. Is that right?
What page?
I don't know. Blue, the blue. Page three.
Item.
Is that an extra, do I supposed to be there? Oh, oops, oops.
Okay, did you get your answer? Good, are there any other changes, deletions? None? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Seek approval of the minutes of November twelfth, twenty nineteen. Moved by Connie. Oh, I thought you were... Minutes? Could you make a note of that Megan, for future reference? We'll make that correction, Ms. Dillard. Ms. Dillard?
But the, the resolution...
Okay, we will make a note of that. It has been noted, and we'll correct that for future meetings and for the minutes on these meetings as well, and we'll approve them next, next time we meet in the COW, no, in the board meeting next Thursday. Thank you for bringing it up to our attention. Were there any other comments? Yes, Stan? Oh, okay, so, approval of the minutes moved by Stan, seconded by Jim? Yes. Approved as amended by Connie, we're adding, including her name of her attendance on that date, as well as moving forward on the roll call as well. So, with there no further changes, we'll go ahead and seek approval of the minutes for November twelfth. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public participation. Okay, seeing none, I don't have any slips up here in front. Anybody wanted to participate in public participation, Ron? No? Okay. Seeing no public participation, we'll move on comments by communications, by board members before we move into presentations. Mike Ingram?
Just wanted to make sure everybody had the information on January ninth, which is a Thursday, at the Champagne City Council chambers, six o'clock to eight o'clock. There will be a panel called Criminal Justice Reform and the Impact of the Proposed Champagne County Jail, hosted by State Representative Carol Ammons and some other elected officials that will be rolled out soon.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Ingram. Charles, you had a comment?
Thank you. I wrote down here, I hope you all receive your invitation. It came in the mail from the University of Illinois, President Colleen and Chancellor Robert Jones, holiday open house celebration. This Thursday, December twelfth, at the President House on Florida Avenue in Abana from six PM to eight PM. And I believe it's also for all elected officials. You were supposed to RSVP by last Friday, December sixth. I got some other stuff, wait a minute. I will explain later how we are, the we, President Colleen, Dr. Jones, myself and other U of I alums, are part of the U of I Education, American Education Research Association, AERE, which we will be attending a conference in California in the spring of twenty twenty. But I'll work with them and some other people from their office to come to our county board meetings and present on how we as county board government can try to improve the quality of decision making as elected officials, along with the six-year strategic plans and their priorities. One last thing. And I will briefly send out an email to everybody on the county board about my two-pas resolution, both pertaining to the county board rulebook, the language, and the added additional travel policy pages. Our county executive person had these additional information added on to our October fifteenth COW meeting agenda, it was stapled. So I hope everybody got it. In this brief email, I just want to explain the right and the correct way to doing the difference between appendix and addendum. Since these resolutions had my name put on it, so there's a difference to how to do it. I'm not nitpicking, I'm just saying, I'm a perfectionist and I try to improve everything that I do. That's it. But I'll send the email out later.
Could you repeat the location of that activity that you said at the beginning?
Oh, it is at the President House on Florida Avenue. I don't have no...
Great, six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yeah, from six to this Thursday, December twelfth, from six PM to eight PM.
Thank you very much. Are there any further board communications? Seeing none. Now we'll move into our presentation for today. Jan DeLuce, President of the Visitors Champagne County, information only. She provided some information on your desks, as well as there's going to be a presentation as to the success to our county on her behalf and her staff and the activities that she hosts throughout the year. Jan? Jane? Hmm? Jane? Jane?
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to come share a few minutes with you. And we are working on getting windows ready on the computer. So I'm going to go ahead and start, and then we'll come back to the presentation itself. So thank you for the opportunity. I do want to introduce Rob Kowalski. He's with the City of Champagne. He is also our past Chair of the Visit Champagne County Board of Directors. And I'm fortunate to have him on the board, as well as Mike Ingram, representing you all on our board itself. So what we do, we promote this area as a destination to visit, work, and live. And hopefully, you receive a lot of information from us already with the quarterly reports and the annual report that's in front of you. So I'm just going to focus on a few highlights tonight and then talk about Destination 2023, which is coming up as we come through our strategic planning process. So in front of you, you have the new experience guide, and this is the former visitors' guide. And part of why we wanted to change the name and rebrand it was so that it was a resource that could be used for not only visitors but for our residents. We often want to encourage our residents to know their community, to be out in their community, and experience the community, so hence the name with that. We also have a new website, and it is still visitchampagnecounty.org. The biggest change on that website is a new live-work section. We have a lot of people wanting resources about moving here, and so being part of talent development is a big part of what we're doing, and so we will, we have that on the website as well. So, and this is called a little bit of a stall and talk about the things, because I want to show you a couple of things on the screen. And what I'll end up doing with this is send you the presentation after the fact, which also includes a link to a couple really good videos. So if you saw on the screen, social media reach, our social media has grown quite a bit. And I got to use my readers to read my own slide. So it's over sixty-four hundred in Facebook followers, also with Instagram and with Twitter, we're seeing a lot of activity grow, both from our residents and visitors using that. The number one Instagram post this last year, what do you think might be? Farren's New Location. Go figure that that ended up being such a popular post. So we were, we were happy to promote that as well. So that's our social media reach. We have a lot of different ways, and hopefully you'll follow some of the channels to be able to keep up with things that are happening in the area. Another thing we're doing, which will be a video link I show you, is featuring local makers. And the one I was going to show you, a quick video on Wooden Hog Barbecue. And if you haven't had it, I hope you try it soon. But we wanted to be able to feature different makers, so we've had Riggs Brewing, we've had Wooden Hog, we've, we've, since we do focus on the greater Champagne County area, we also focused on Prairie Glass in Monticello. Yeah, great. So, and then also looking at our Restaurant Week. We had thirty-one restaurants participate, and I've been to speak to you all for several years in a row. And if you can remember when we were starting this, this was an opportunity to be able to showcase restaurants at a time when it's not very active. And it's when people, at the end of January, and people have given up on their New Year's resolutions. So it's a great way to experience our restaurants, and so we've had a huge response from both residents and visitors. It will return again at the end of January. We've already started soliciting which restaurants are going to be included in that, and it's a great way to experience new restaurants, because there's a lot of prefix menus. So places maybe you haven't gone, that they'll do a special menu for that time. Also, one of the things that we do that gets less talked about, because it doesn't get as much media attention, is coordinating bids for conferences and meetings. We can do a lot for our weekends, but what we really need to do is fill our hotels and our restaurants, our retail, our gas during the week. So on the, on the screen, you can visualize that there's a slide that talks about a variety of conferences that are ones that we either coordinated the bid for to get that conference. We arranged hotel blocks, or the transportation, and/or the entertainment, and oftentimes even assisted with registration, or providing materials. Those are very, very important with the types of meetings and conferences, bringing that business to our community, especially for weekday. Then, what we did host this past May was called the Sports Illinois Huddle. And this was an opportunity where we brought in other cities in Illinois. So there were sixteen cities that were involved, including our area. And we showcased not only our sport facilities, but had an opportunity to meet one-on-one with sport planners from around the country. While it was an opportunity to promote Illinois as a sports destination, it was a wonderful opportunity to showcase this area. We worked hand-in-hand with University of Illinois Athletics and got behind-the-scenes tours of places that people don't always get to go, like the golf facility. We toured the, went to a baseball game for a tailgate. We had the one-on-one meetings up at Memorial Stadium. So a lot of these other CVBs like us around the state not only got to see us, but we got to talk with sport planners and got to be in front of them, and while we were able to experience the area. And then, what I'm most excited about, up on the screen, visual, are you following? You know, you can, you can just see it. It just, it looks so good, it's such a great slide. We're announcing that we are hosting the Upper Midwest Convention and Visitors Bureau Conference. And we bid on this against other cities in the state of Illinois and in Wisconsin. They don't always pick what were considered a smaller market. So this is an opportunity, so if you took two-hundred-and-fifty people that do what we do, but in representing eight states, the Upper Midwest, they will all be in our backyard in September of twenty twenty-one. This was a huge win for us to bring in all of these conference participants to this area. Oh, I'm seeing our presentation, it's coming up. That's exciting. We're going to, we're going to catch up. Thank you. And for John Rector, I'm going to start over. No, I'm just kidding. John asked me how long I was going to talk. Well, don't you love that when people come, how long you going to talk? So we're going to flip... Maybe flip through these? There's just something about you, John, I don't know. Okay. Okay. So there's the social media reach that we talked about with all the different followers. There was the video. And the sound is what we were trying to get, and you really have to be able to hear because of the testimony. So we're going to go pass that, and I'll send that link to you on Wooden Hog Barbecue. This is about Champagne County Area Restaurant Week with the thirty-one restaurants. I think it's important just on that one, Ramin from Pizzeria Antica in downtown Champagne, this is my favorite quote, he said, "It saves our January." That's how important it is that our residents support our local businesses. Talked about the meetings and conferences, all the glamour that they bring during weekday traffic with health science librarians, to engineers, to rail tech, to the Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives. Here's two that are coming up in twenty twenty, both in leisure sciences and teachers of singing. Here was the, now this doesn't have sound, oh, you're not even seeing that one. This is the one that was talking about Sports Illinois Huddle, and I think you'll be interested to do that. So we'll flip through that, visualize that part. This is hosting, what I mentioned, hosting the UMCVB Conference in September of twenty twenty-one. You can see what the eight states are, Illinois, Iowa, Minnesota, New One, Missouri, Nebraska, both Dakotas and Wisconsin. Two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty attendees in our area. This is going to be a phenomenal way to showcase the community. And what perfect timing to bring back the Hot Rod Power Tour for all the car enthusiasts. This is the fourth time we are hosting this event, part of a seven-day, seven-city national tour. Why are they coming back to this area? Because we treat them right. We have a good facility outside of State Farm Center, now with it renovated and air-conditioned. In June, we're able to use some of it indoors, but it's really focused on the outdoors. It is an over one-million-dollar, one-point-five-million-dollar economic impact in a twenty-four-hour period. All of these car enthusiasts come from the first location, or the fourth location on the seven-day, seven-city tour. You can see when it was hosted here before in twelve, two thousand and fifteen, and two thousand and seventeen, and it's coming back in twenty twenty. This is a huge boom, and it's a free event, it's a great way for car enthusiasts or people just to go out and see some really cool cars. New area of working with, I talked a little bit about this at the beginning, talent development. So a collaboration, which is very important between organizations, so us with the EDC, Your Welcome CU and the university, is educating our human resource professionals on why people should move here, why people should work here, why they should move their families and take that job. And so being part of the HR recruitment efforts, whether it's a bus tour for some of those HR professionals, whether it's a roundtable to talk about what their needs are. We are doing community tours for high-level recruits, sometimes for the medical facilities, sometimes for U of I. And then on the, on the middle part of that is a checklist that new hires are being able to, that's being distributed to new hires, so they know how to embrace our community when they come live here. Another one, Chambana Proud. Hopefully you've seen this one announced already. We get a lot, a lot of requests for local merchandise. So these, in collaboration again with EDC, Your Welcome CU and Forty North, these are t-shirts that were designed by local artists, and they are available through Weiscamp Printing. They'll be online on a store, and our goal is to actually place it in local shops and visitor destinations for people to get them, celebrating from hashtag Chambana to the fact we made the internet, sweet corn, whipped cream in a can. It's a great way to build more pride for Chambana. So moving on to Destination twenty twenty-three. We're just wrapping up, kind of in the process of our strategic planning efforts. You were all invited to participate in the survey, a couple of you participated in focus groups. This opportunity is what this community is going to look like three years from the time that we are implementing this. There it is, okay. So, first area on destination infrastructures, enhancing this community as a destination. Big part of that, advocating for destination-defining development and activities, advancing our regional sports and outdoor rec assets, and then for, of course, for enhanced transportation assets and wayfinding signage. Big ones we're focusing on, the Yards, Downtown Plaza, the Martin Center, the Kickapoo Rail Trail Expansion, and the newly-announced Rantool Sports Complex. All of those projects in their own, own way will define what this destination look like in short term and then in long term for years to come. And then, of course, with the newly-expended I Hotel and Conference Center groundbreaking that just happened a couple weeks ago, opening in fall of twenty twenty. What does this do for us? We get to bring in conferences that are a little bit larger. We're in a very small, small meeting market right now, being able to bring in larger groups of different size. We have people that want to come to this community, and we haven't had the conference space to be able to hold them. So having the expanded I Hotel and Conference Center, and then announcing the Yards. I'm looking back at Rob, because I want them to announce that. Having that opportunity for downtown Champagne, that is going to be game changers for our community. And then, of course, for Willard Airport. When I talked about the UMCVB Conference, coming from seven other states, a lot of them want to fly here. So it's very important with our air transportation and having expanded air service. So we're heavy on those advocacy efforts and working with them, as well as, as everybody heard about the Rail Summit that just happened. On-time performance. We have a lot of bragging points, and having the worst on-time performance, not only in the state but in the country, is not something any of us want to brag about. So we have to be able to resolve our Amtrak on-time performance, as well as increase passenger lines. And then the second goal on strength in visitor and resident experiences, being, maintaining an inclusive culture of hospitality as defining aspect of this community, to be family-friendly, to expand our festival and event culture, and to promote a destination calendar of events, because we don't want everything happening on Mom's Weekend. You know, we get all the people who ask us for a new place, and they're like, "We want to come in mid-April." And we're like, "No, any other month, please." So with that, we want to train, we want to work with people to train them and to recognize when people are hospitable. Cream of the Crop is something that we do on a monthly basis. People are nominated by the public for people who go above and beyond within the service industry. You can see some of the recent winners and who's being awarded here. And then training our own residents to be our best ambassadors. This is a campaign that we've run, we're in our second year of this now, called Living Outside of Ordinary. This is all user-generated content. We, every week, recommend seven things to do, every, seven days a week, each week. And with this, we want our own residents to be the best ambassadors they can be. We can do all the shiny advertising with the experience guide, and, you know, billboards and ads and things, but if people come here and they don't have good interaction with the people who live here, then it's not going to be a quality experience. We want to be known for a destination that's hospitable, so we want to build our brand ambassadors from the people who know this community best, and that's our residents. And then developing a festival and events council, so that we'd have the opportunity to share best practices. And then support county-wide events. And you know, I thought hot rods would be something I never would be working with when I started this job ten years ago, but I never thought I'd be working with punkin-chunkin. So here you go, Rantool. We've now the, the home of the World Championship Punkin-Chunkin Championships, that's hard to say. And I think it's a great opportunity for the Aviation Center. We're trying to program that space, because it is our largest wide-open space with concrete that we have in the county. And it's an opportunity to be unique. We already have reindeer in Rantool, so now let's have some punkin-chunkin. And then on the other side, with the Illinois Triathlon Championships using Lake of the Woods. We've hosted it twice now. It's a three-year contract, a three-year contract for that event. And then the IHSA basketball bid. So, as you know, as you've read, read the paper, because Ben likes to cover it often, this is an effort that is being done between Visit Champagne County, U of I Athletics, a lot of private and public partners. And Jim and I were talking about this before, it's time to bring this event back to Champagne. So, we are ready to wrap up the bid process, and this is where I'll make an ask of you. You have in front of you what the, what the, is being asked of everybody else. And if the county board would like to talk amongst yourselves, I'm not sure of your process on that, and would consider being part of it and being one of the partners financially, that would be awesome. It is for a three-year agreement. If you haven't heard, it will, the, the RFP is for twenty twenty-one. They'll vote in March of twenty twenty for the, where the championships will start in March of twenty twenty-one. It's for three years, and it's one weekend. So all four classes of basketball will be played on one weekend. It'll be a very busy weekend. The people that have been involved, it's, somebody described it as epic, and I love it, because it was the idea of not only utilizing the renovated State Farm Center for every possible way to engage people there, having terrific game day operations, but also for the fan experience to happen right in State Farm Center, as well as without in the community, and also celebrating our academics, and what it means to be part of the university and to be in this community. So we're put, the bid is due January tenth of twenty twenty. We're going to submit it the week, week of January sixth. And so there's still time for you all as a county board, so I graciously ask for you all to consider that, if you would be a part of it, along with the other partners that are part of it. would be a part of it along with the other partners that are part of it, because we need everybody's help to do that. And then our third goal of our strategic plan, that was part of the second one, is just embracing Visit Champaign County as a community shared value, as we continue to build partnerships with other organizations that share common goals, as we work with our government officials, and we work to increase and diversify our funding model for continuing to promote this community as a destination. So here's another video. I'll send you the link, and it's a great video that talks about what the numbers actually look like. And then finally, I want to close with, this is, this is your team, this is your Board of Directors, and this is your Foundation Board of Directors. As I mentioned before, thank you to Mike Ingram for representing the Champaign County Board on our board. He does a terrific job. And, and what I love about this group is that we have people from all walks of life that are guiding our policies as a team on what best way that we can work with other partners and other people to make this community even better and make it a stronger place for people to want to come visit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jane. Excellent job that you do.
Thank you.
And we look forward to hopefully sponsoring the, the basketball tournament. We'll have to talk with Darlene and Tammy and the budget. So, Mike?
Just wanted to echo the thanks. I'm glad that the picture of me is off the screen now.
I was going to keep it up there.
Oh, that was the, yeah, when somebody says, "Ah, don't forget to send us that picture," and you keep forgetting to send that picture, and then they just put up the one that they can find of you that they think looks the dumbest.
You can give us another one.
No, it's fine. It's a badge boner now. I do want to say, I, I was, obviously, I had at least a tacit awareness of, of Visit Champaign County before I was added to the board, because I am on Forty North's board, and Forty North kind of works intrinsically with VCC. But, you know, even just a few months on, on the VCC board has been, has been interesting because I knew what they did. I didn't really realize some of the impact. And when we talk about like, putting dollars in the hands of our, of our constituents, you talk about service employees, the working class, people that are really working very hard in this community. When, when you get big events that come into this town and fill our restaurants and fill our hotels and things like that, even gas stations, whatever, that is, that's directly reflected back into people in our community who are, you know, often struggling, especially at times of the year when you talk about Restaurant Week and things like that, that, you know, that they might not be doing even as well as, as they might hope other times. So it's been, it's been interesting to watch, and I know that we probably all, every time we have a presentation, we all kind of have to, you know, well, you know, if rector's asking you how long the presentation's going to be, you know, that's, you're the target today there, John. But, but I, I do appreciate you coming and, and telling us about this stuff and, and making sure that, that we understand that there's a lot of economic impact that's out there. It's nice for us to not have to really worry about it and know that it's in good hands. Your team does a really great job, you know, going to conventions and going to trade shows and things like that, and bringing things back here. And that stuff all does have a direct impact to the people that we represent, so I do appreciate all the work that you do, and thanks for coming and talking to us.
Well, thank you, Jane, for your participation. Yes, Ron?
Thanks for everything you do. I do the marathon every year, and this, it's just after the marathon, and this isn't a reflection on Visit Champaign County, I think it's the marathon people. It's just like, everybody just disperses, and I just think there's an opportunity to do something, so would love to talk to you and Mike later on, like, might not be able to do it for this April, but it's just like, it just kind of ends, and I just.
Are you talking about like for Saturday evening?
Yeah, but it's, but Saturday evening's too late. It's got to be like.
Right, right after the.
Within a couple hours, so anyway.
Okay.
It's not your responsibility, but it'd be neat if we could work with the marathon people and actually do something really cool soon, soon after the race on Saturday.
After the twenty-seventh mile.
I think the people that finish earlier than you and I do have a better opportunity at all the things that they put out there, but by the time you and I get out there, I think it's a little bit, it's a little bit more dispersed.
That's true. True. Thanks, Jane.
Thank you for the great work that you do, Jane, as well as Mike Ingram. Thank you for representing us very well on the board and attending the meetings and coordinating board efforts. So thank you both for the excellent work. Thank you. Okay, for information only, item B, a letter from Joseph Lamb, President of the Champaign Asphalt Company. Jeff, is there anything that we need to know regarding the addition of this letter to our board packet on page nine through eleven?
I read through that letter prior to coming to the meeting. It appears like it's really focused on I.D. District Five, not municipalities, counties, townships. I mean, the county is receiving a sixty-eight percent increase in our motor fuel tax funds, as well as the townships. But District Five's a pretty small district, too. When you look at the number of counties in our district, there's only seven out of a hundred and two, and there's nine districts in the state. So we're, as far as numbers go, relatively small. I don't know why the, you know, it's down for the overall I.D., but we are going to get the fifty-seven and seventy-four interchange, which is a huge deal for Champaign County, so. I don't want to poo-poo his letter or anything like that, because Joe really knows what's going on, and he keeps, you know, the heartbeat of the construction industry near and dear to him. But it's got nothing to do with the county, honestly.
Okay, so just let it be known that this letter will be placed on file. Steve?
I will speak to it. A disclaimer, I did work for Champaign Asphalt for about twenty years, so I no longer work for them though, so I feel free to speak freely. Before I came on the board, I did look at local issues, and one of the issues that I saw since I had worked in this industry was, it appeared four years ago that funding for District Five was lower than it was for other similar-sized districts. If, when I read this letter and look at the chart, what I noticed is the percentage of increase, that's the real discrepancy. There's going to be differences in how much each district is going to get based on number of miles, bridges, but our highway district, which includes Champaign, Urbana, Bloomington, Normal, got a seventy percent, about a seventy percent increase, which sounds great, until you look at all the other districts in the state which received upwards of one hundred percent increases. So I would suggest, and I suggested in caucus, that we might want to work with Mr. Rose, Bennett, Carol Ammons, and see if we can do anything to try and get changes, if not this budget cycle and the next budget cycle, to try and at least capture a fair share of the increased highway revenue. That's better roads for our community and our area, and more jobs for people that live in, in our community. So that's, that's all I have to say on this point. But look at the numbers, and the increases are really different if you look at the differences.
Thank you for sharing that information, Steve. When I looked at it, I couldn't make heads or tails out of it. Jim?
Yeah, Steve's correct. We've, we've had these discussions in the past, and these are great jobs. I mean, and they drive, drive the economy throughout the area, and there's bridges and other roads, I think, that need some attention, seventy-four and fifty-seven, and then on to Mohammed, so I agree.
Mike?
Just wanted to say that Mr. Summers kind of actually understated the, the vast difference in these numbers. Our district, that's a seventy-three percent increase, and it's not just near a hundred. The next lowest is one hundred and twenty-seven percent, and the highest is two hundred and ninety-one percent. So at our seventy-three and nothing else close to us until one hundred and twenty-seven percent. It is, it is, I think it's worth looking at and worth noting and trying to figure out what we can do to, to fix that, because those are very important jobs that impact lots of people around us.
Thank you. Stan?
Just kind of echo what Mike and Steve have said. You know, I've been here seven years, and District Five has always been on the short end of this deal. Jeff, do you know why? I mean, you're talking about several major downstate municipalities. You've got Bloomington, Normal, and Champaign, Urbana, and I think Danville's in it. I've never understood it. I mean, it's been this, like you just said, it's been this way for years. It'd be nice to know why. You get the answer, let us know.
Aaron?
Thanks. I just want to add, it's not just the interstates, too. I mean, the, I think it was alluded to, but, I mean, just one right next to me, it's the St. Joe, Sidney slab between St. Joe and Sidney. That's a state road, and it is terrible, along with a bridge that, I believe Ms. Ogden lives right there, that is weight restricted, has weight restrictions on it. So hauling to the elevator in the fall, it's been that way for now, I don't know, four years or so probably at least, maybe more, time flies. So yeah, it's not just the interstate. I mean, not that the interstate interchange doesn't need it, that'd be great, but it's, it's throughout the district.
Jeff, are these done by bidding, or how are these selected, or?
So I.D. went to this, something we've had in the county for years, you know, we have our payment management system, and we've been doing that here for ten years. And they went to a transportation asset management program, I think they call it TAMP. And supposedly, all these numbers and these allocations are coming out of what that asset management program is telling them they need to do on their roadways and their bridges. That's what I've been told. But if you could sit down and talk to Omer, Secretary of Transportation, or somebody like that, and, and get a audience with him, I'm sure that always helps, and I would be more than willing to, to be a part of that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on item B? Number six, item B. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move with finance. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item seven A is Budget Amendment nineteen dash zero 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 five eight from Fund Six Two One, State's Attorney Drug Forfeitures to Department Zero Four One, State's Attorney, an increased appropriations of six thousand dollars, increased revenue was zero. The reason is, an increase in appropriations for educational material and conference registration and travel, the increase will come from fund balance. They do have adequate fund balance to cover this, and our State's Attorney, Julia Reitz, has put a memo at your desk if you have further questions. Is there such a motion? Ms. Fortato? Second, Mr. Clifford. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, item two, Budget Amendment nineteen dash zero 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 six one from Fund Zero Eight Zero, General Corporate to Department Zero Seven One, Public Properties, increased appropriations of eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, increased revenue eight hundred and sixty-five thousand. The reason, the budget amendment to record the revenue and expenditures for the Series two thousand nineteen refunding bonds, formerly two thousand ten A bonds, issued November twenty-seventh of two thousand nineteen. Is there such a motion? Mr. Esri, second by Mr. Store. Discussion. This has to do with our refunding of these bonds, repricing? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Auditor, item B, auditor number one, the monthly reports out on the website. Item C, the sheriff is requesting an EMA grant. This is a grant from the emergency management people, an intergovernment-type agreement that happens every year. The one, the one thing that's a little different than this one, than normal, is they're, they're actually stretching this out to fifteen months. They're trying to get on, on a different fiscal year, so it's three months longer than normal. Other than that, this is something we've done for a number of years. Is there such a motion? Mr. Harper, second, Mr. Thorzlin. Discussion. Ms. Fortato?
Is the new fiscal year going to go March to March then, after this?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
So that's, that's why it went fifteen months this time. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay. Item D, County Executive, an update on the status of the county finances. That's in your packet for information only. Any discussion? There's no motion needed on this. Mr. Harper?
I read this, and I have a lot of questions. Well, not a lot of questions. Why would you put this letter out when we've never really seen a complete financial statement in a year? That's, that's my only question. I just don't understand it. I mean, we're sat here, everybody's not getting money, or it's not reconciled, the council aren't reconciled, and now all of a sudden, everything's fine. I mean, how can we put a letter out like this and have not received a complete financial statement like we used to get?
Do you want to, do you want to respond?
The county has made several comments about not getting reports about the county's finances, and I just wanted to update the board on where we are with the auditor and the county executive's office in terms of trying to give some assistance in that regard.
Ms. Wilkin?
I had a question on, on the comment that your office has hired a CPA to reconcile all the bank statements. Number one, I was wondering how much that, that costs, and secondly, why did we have to hire a CPA to train to do bank reconciliations? I just think that that's not reasonable, that there's not anybody in that office that can't do a simple bank reconciliation.
So we did try to find one of the firms that have done our audits in the past to help us with finishing out some of the financial reconciliations. We found some assistance through Clifton Larson Anderson. We calculated that to be approximately fifteen working days left in this year that she could work on that, and the total cost will, if she works all of those days, will come out to be around fifteen thousand. The other question you'd have to ask the treasurer about.
And she is here.
Again, my concern is the fact that we're spending fifteen thousand dollars to pay to do bank reconciliations. That, that to me is, is ridiculous.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Is there any other business for the Finance Committee? Okay, Chair's Report. I have a Chair's Report this month. While I, while I may agree with some of Executive Kleppel's memo, I want to put on the public record a few problems that still exist in the treasurer's office. Two thousand nineteen has been challenging for the Finance Committee in that we've not received enough factual financial information to make what I consider to be appropriate and responsible decisions. In fact, many board members have failed to even ask a single question regarding our financial position. Thankfully, we no longer have a nursing home draining the coffers dry, because at this point, we have no idea about the financial position of the county. I'm concerned that we, as guardians of the public checkbook, cannot seem to get any information out of an elected office official. Few board members took offense that several board members voted no on a budget amendment for the treasurer's office in October. As far as I can tell, and really, after we've answered questions this evening, throwing money at the problems for an unqualified temporary chief deputy has not helped. We're little, we are. We're little, we are little closer to factual information than we were a few months ago. Had the Treasurer hired a temporary chief deputy with a financial background and qualifications, I may have supported the amendment. But since she chose to use it as a political patronage job, I did not and will not support budget amendments to this office. Once again, another month has gone by, and the taxpayer who brought the real estate tax withdrawal problem to my attention in October, which I shared on the public record both of the last two months, shared with me yesterday that his second installment of real estate taxes has yet to be withdrawn from his bank account. It still shows that he's paid his taxes on the website, on DevNet, but the funds are still in his bank account. When will this actually be a priority? I can't believe that this is the only case in the county. Can we confirm that this is the only case? I don't have any idea. As stated in Executive Kleppel's memo, the executive has now hired the CPA to reconcile the two thousand and nineteen bank accounts. Now we find out at a cost of about fifteen thousand dollars. This is just more money spent to do the job that the Treasurer's Office should have done. If we have, if we've been without a chief deputy since September, why are the bank accounts not reconciled up through August? How do we expect things are gonna get better in two thousand and twenty? If there are people being trained to move forward in two thousand and twenty, why aren't we seeing that fruit come to bear right now? We've not seen a CAFER or a comprehensive annual financial report from the Auditor's Office with the financial information from two thousand and eighteen that was complete and factual from the Treasurer's Office. Federal grant funding is and will be held up until this is completed. I sit on the RPC Board. There is extreme, extreme disappointment and fear that they're going to lose grant funding. They report to the state and federal agencies that they are holding back grants because we don't have an audit. Those audits are supposed to be completed by September thirtieth. They've been late the both couple of years I've been. At this point, we don't have anything, and they've got an RPC meeting Friday where they've asked the Treasurer to come speak. Oh, sorry, auditor, sorry, auditor, sorry, my fault. I skipped a line, am I? With all these known problems, how will we ever get two thousand and nineteen straightened out? We're still working on two thousand and eighteen. We've got two problems in two thousand and nineteen, how are we gonna get those straightened out for the two thousand and nineteen CAFER? How many grants will this county have to lose before this becomes an issue that comes before this Board? In closing, we should expect more from the Treasurer's Office. State statute requires that we receive complete and factual financial information. I can argue all day long that hasn't happened. The statutes are the stages that the Treasurer is to provide reports to the Board. We've had little to no reports. When is the majority gonna make these problems a priority and step forward and join me in standing up for what's right and required? I believe that the citizens of Champaign County deserve better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your report, Jim. Any questions?
Designations for items to be on the consent agenda, number seven A, one, two, and C, one.
Thank you, Justice in Social Service, Kyle Patterson?
All right, a pretty light agenda for this meeting. I have my monthly reports for probation of court services and the public defender's office for October, as well as the Rosecrans reentry financial report for October. We do have an item, intergovernmental agreement for body camera purchase through the Sheriff's Office. Essentially, what this is, is a, the Sheriff's Office was able to, through an intergovernmental agreement, basically piggyback off of another agency's RFP for body camera purchases that we put in next year's budget. Does anybody have any questions about that? No? Not very interesting. Is this an action item?
We need to approve intergovernmental agreements, Kyle?
Yeah, does somebody wanna motion? Ingram, Tensley, second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, and you now have the Chair's Report, that's it.
Great, any questions for Kyle regarding Justice and Social Service? Esri?
Should, it's not shown on here, but should that be put then on the consent agenda, since it was approved unanimously? It wasn't shown on here, so just bringing it up.
Item C. Great, thank you. Jim?
Yes, I just wanted to ask a question about the agenda. Apparently, there's no leadership committee meetings for this committee any longer. Is, when has that decision been made? I haven't been involved in that. I just wanted to, so how did this item get on the agenda if there was no committee meeting?
They sent an email about it, but I guess it didn't.
Obviously, you didn't send me an email.
Well, I don't send the emails about this, so.
Any further questions?
So other committees are allowed to have meetings, but we don't have committee meetings for Justice and Social Services any longer?
I think we've only had one this year?
Yeah, that's kind of the point. Obviously, the other committees have the meetings and we have, and we have had, obviously, an item on the agenda that wasn't discussed in that meeting, because we're not having the meetings. When will they start again?
I would imagine it would be January, the next one. And Darlene, can we make sure that the information gets out regarding that?
Most of the time, there's not agenda items for voting at these committees, there hasn't been for several months. So we, I guess we did send it to Kyle, I'm sorry, you were not copied. But the committee has not met for several months, you're right.
Okay. Sorry about that, Jim. We'll make sure that you get the email next time around in January. Any further discussion? Kyle, I did have one question. There has been rumored that, coming out of the Mental Health Board, that when we're looking at the jail situation, that they were wanting at least to start focusing on a triage center working in coordination with OSS, OSF, and Carl, and the Sheriff's Department. Have you heard any talk regarding that?
Lieutenant Joel Sanders with your Abana Police Department, I believe it was earlier this year, did give a presentation on, he's working with Sue at Home, which is now operating out of the Time Center, and Rosecrans on establishing a sort of triage center for, basically like an emergency room for people who are experiencing mental health, behavioral health episodes, somebody who might be a little bit too much to take to the emergency room, but shouldn't necessarily be in the jail. He had presented to other local bodies of government about this idea. Was that, I can't remember if that was here or Mental Health Board, it's in the same room, so my memory is that.
I know some years ago, Peter Tracy was recommending that. At about a hundred and forty thousand, they had found some kind of building or structure that they could house these individuals and monitor them and be able to farm them out to the different hospitals or to the Sheriff's Office and work in basically rehabilitating them or providing services to them, mental health services. So I know that that discussion was, had been going on for many years, but I just recently heard it resurfaced again, that that's what we really would need when it comes to building programs and not jails. So, okay, great, well, thank you. Stan?
Since you bring that up, and being on facilities, and Steve and I have talked quite, Mr. Summers and I have quite a bit, I know he's talked with you. So we're getting the hospitals to maybe come aboard, I mean, that's gonna help us out. I mean, that's a big hangup. I mean, the county can't do this by themselves unless the cities, the hospitals, and whoever, Rose and Crans, they're gonna have to step forward, help as far as the, I mean, Steve's brought up the fact that we need the program, and I've been, like I've said a dozen times, I've been here seven years, and the mental issues are something I did not realize when I got here seven years ago. But that'd be great if we can get the hospitals and the cities to jump on board and help us out with this problem. I mean, it's a whole county-wide problem, and I'd be anxious to sit down with you and your group also, with Steve and I, it'd be great, I think, Kyle, appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely, and what I've heard, they've had talks on and off with Carl and OSF. I think dealing with entities that big, and they kind of have their own agendas, is a little difficult, but they are coming to the realization that a program, an institution like this, is gonna save them money in the long run, because, you know, when they take these cases in the emergency room, you know, it winds up adding up, so hopefully, they'll be on board. But having them involved is really a key.
Well, thank you both for your input. And Jim, we'll make sure that that will be an agenda item for our January meeting regarding, regarding Justice and Social Services.
Yes, I guess I'll make a comment about it. Joel has been working with the other parts, the other communities and organizations, and we are just kind of a part of that, we're not necessarily a driver in that. We may be able to discuss it, maybe have him come and discuss it with us. But the cities and the hospitals are more the drivers of it.
Right.
We're just on the peripheral, not necessarily in the middle of it.
Stan?
Shut up after this.
No, it's okay. We've got time.
Is the Mental Health Board, do they have the funding available to, to help out with this projects and consistently fund, help fund some mental health problems we have or not?
They do fund mental health programs. I mean, it all depends on what they apply for with the Mental Health Board. I mean, the way that Mental Health Board works is, there's annual applications, and it is anticipated that there is gonna be some type of application related to that program, but we don't know exactly what. They have a lot to work out on their end, I believe.
I know that we, I know that we do provide funding for the reentry program, and that would be one entity that would be able to work with that. I did toss around some ideas and some questions with Lynn Canfield, and she responded by a group email to the entire Board some time ago, maybe two, three months ago, in detail describing what was at hand, what she knew regarding the leadership from Peter Tracy to her, and what was in store regarding some of those ideas. I could look for it and resend it to the Board as well, but I do believe everybody was copied on this Board regarding that. But it's just, it sort of got buried in there with the other emails about three months ago. Cool, any other questions? Great, thank you. We'll move on to John. You get an opportunity to shine bright today, right?
It's my day, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Policy personnel and appointments, John Richter.
Thank you, thank you. Item one, the monthly HR report is in your packet. I do have a question, page thirty-nine. I noticed the workers' comp numbers have really improved, I know ESOC isn't here. Darlene, do you have a feel for that at all? The year-to-date totals, November twenty nineteen compared to twenty eighteen, it's just significant drop. Is there, do you know?
Part of that is that we lost the nursing home staff in our count.
Okay.
So that was a significant number of people.
Great. Another benefit of not having the nursing home. Thank you. Item two, seek approval to request to refer the proposed job description for a structural engineer to the Job Evaluation Committee. Mr. Clemmons? Second, Mr. Clifford, any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Chris?
We had some questions about the, the job at our caucus and concerns that the, that the new position would be a licensed professional engineer and structural engineer. There was kind of some, that was kind of unfamiliar with some of the caucus members. Want to?
Jeff, do you want to address that? Can you restate, do you understand the question? Chris, could you restate the question, please?
Okay. Well, what is the distinction between, of structural engineer? Why, why would that be of a particular benefit?
So in the state of Illinois, in order to design buildings and bridges, which is what we're concerned about at the county, and stamp them, you have to be a licensed structural engineer, which means you have to have had an apprenticeship under the supervision of a structural engineer, and you have to take the structural engineer's licensing exam, which is way beyond anything that I even know about. You have to be a PE, and then after you do an apprenticeship as a structural designer, then you take a day-long test, and it's very difficult. I've known many people that have never passed it. I've known many people that have taken it multiple times to get through it. It's a very difficult exam, and it's a specific stamp and registration you have to have in order to design bridges in the state of Illinois.
That's just not bridges, but also high-rise.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, anything to do with a structure, steel, concrete, you know, we can design roads and ditches and all those kind of things at the county level, because we're professional engineers. But in order to design bridges, we've traditionally used consultants, because they're the ones that have the structural engineers on staff. So I would prefer to do more of that type of work in-house and not have to use as many consultants as we've used in the past.
Thank you. Stephanie?
I also had a question.
Sorry, Brad.
Just, I think, I mean, I think it's great, because I think, I think you're right that, long-term, this could save us some money. Just two quick questions. Are we confident that the motor fuel tax change, that funding is stable going forward so that the number of projects we're gonna do, you know, beyond two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, is gonna be enough? Right, because the savings is that if we have enough projects, that we don't have to do the consultant. So one, do we anticipate sort of that continued higher level of bridge projects? And two, do you, do we think, given what you've said about the qualifications and the difficulty, do you think that, are you pretty confident we're gonna get applicants?
So the, the motor fuel tax increase that was passed by the legislature is an ongoing tax that is not gonna go away, unless somehow they reverse it in a, in a bill, which I don't believe is gonna happen. So our, our sixty-eight percent increase in our motor fuel tax is, for all intents purposes, forever. So we already do three, four, five bridges a year, and had we had a structural engineer even prior to this, we probably would have been saving a considerable amount of money. It was just, the, the way we're gonna fund it is to transfer the money from the motor fuel tax, because this person will be working on bridges, which will fund with motor fuel tax, so we can, we can bill his time back to the motor fuel tax account in order to, you know, recoup those funds, because we don't have the necessary funding directly in the personnel items, in the highway fund. Will we get a candidate? I have one that has already expressed a lot of interest. I don't know if we'll get more than one. A structural engineering license is a pretty particular thing. So hopefully, this candidate to, who I know is interested, will apply. Maybe we'll get others, I don't really know.
Mr. Clemmons?
I was just gonna say, thank you, you're kind of thinking out of the box with this MFT money, and I think this is gonna be a great savings to the county. I know on the township side, when I've done bridges, and the amount of engineering and fees that I've paid out on those bridges, if we can cut that by a third, that'd be wonderful.
Right, and that's, that's, usually, we're around ten to fifteen percent engineering fees to do a bridge. So let's say we do a million-dollar bridge, that's a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one shot. That would pay the salary. That would pay the salary and benefits of this person for a year. So that's the intent of, and also it gives us some in-house expertise. You know, we got a bridge problem. I got to call a structural engineer, and he's got to come out and look at it with me, and obviously, that's billable time. If we have somebody in-house that can oversee that, as well as oversee our bridge inspection program and some of the issues that we find during our bridge inspections, that we're not sure how bad it really is or how much attention we really need to give to it, if we have somebody that is an expert in that field, I think it'll, it'll help prolong the life of our bridges, and it will help us reduce the costs of replacing the bridges as well.
That, that was going to be my next point because we're not going to be waiting for an engineer to get there. You have one in-house. It'll be right there.
Yes. Yep.
Any other questions? Chris? Do you have it?
I was just thinking that with having that expertise in-house, we might also get early identification of problems at a time when they can either be repaired or we, we have advance notice to...
Right.
To, to deal with stuff. And it, it would also kind of provide justification if we want to try to encourage more money to be spent in our district.
Yes, indeed.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jeff. Item three, we'll get into the appointments by the county executive. Item three A for the Senior Services Advisory Board. The county executive appoints Cindy Bell, who is appointed to a term twelve-one twenty nineteen to eleven-thirty twenty twenty-two. I'm seeking a motion. Mr. Clements first. Mr. Goss with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Item B for the Bill Hus, Hus? Thank you. I meant to ask you earlier. For the Bill Hus Cemetery Association, the county executive appoints Brandon Hastings, who is appointed to a term twelve-nineteen twenty nineteen to six-thirty twenty twenty-two. Moved by Aaron Esri, second. Mr. Stan Harper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item C for the Mental Health Board, there's three positions. The county executive is appointing Elaine Palencia, who is appointed to an unexpired term twelve-nineteen twenty nineteen to twelve-thirty-one twenty-two, and Kathleen Worth Couch, who is appointed to a term one-one twenty twenty to twelve-thirty-one twenty twenty-three, and John Yelkam, who is appointed to a term one-one twenty twenty to twelve-thirty-one twenty twenty-three. Moved by Mr. Ingram, second by Mr. Store. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D for the Developmental Disabilities Board. The county executive appoints Georgiana Schuster, who is appointed to an unexpired term twelve-nineteen twenty nineteen to six-thirty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Ingram with the first. Mr. Patterson with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item E for the Champaign, Abana Mass Transit District. This is for a democratic replacement. The county executive appoints Thomas Delgado, who is appointed to a term of one-one twenty twenty to twelve-thirty-one twenty twenty-four. Can I have a motion? Mr. Patterson, second, Ms. Taylor. I'm sorry? Oh, Tomas. I'm sorry. I apologize. Because I was correcting.
Tomas, right.
Thanks, thanks, Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F for the East Central Illinois Land Bank Authority. We talked about this at, at Policy. The county executive wanted to stagger the seat since we have the election coming up, so that's why she's recommending the county board member just for the one-year term. County executive appoints Aaron Esri, who is appointed for a term of twelve-one twenty nineteen to eleven-thirty twenty twenty. Darlene Clappel, who is appointed for a term of twelve-one twenty nineteen to eleven-thirty twenty twenty-two. And John Hall is appointed for a term of twelve-one twenty nineteen to eleven-thirty twenty twenty-two. So moved by Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Ingram. Discussion or questions for the county executive? Guess not. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. County Clerk's November twenty nineteen report is on file. I have no other business for the chair's report. There are those vacancies that are listed there. For designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda, I have nine A, two, and three A, B, C, D, E, and F. No, we do not need to read all the vacancies, Mr. Patterson. They are there for information. Thank you.
Are there any questions for John Richter?
I love you guys.
Regarding appointments, policy, and personnel? Great, excellent. Thank you very much for filling in. Are there any further comments, questions regarding today's agenda, items discussed? Final comments? Where, Mike?
Just real quick, since it just came up this week. I actually wish my seatmate was here as well. There's been a lot of discussion this week, especially at the school board meeting last night about IPA potentially swapping places with the, with the Garden Hills School. I would hope that anybody watching at home and anybody sitting on this board would be paying attention to that. It seems like a, a lot of displacement of some people who live in that neighborhood who don't really deserve that. And I'm really hopeful that the school board and the superintendent come forward with a lot more information about that. But seeing as how it sits in my district, I thought it was pretty important to note that we should all be paying quite a bit of attention to that. Both schools are amazing. It's not a matter of moving, you know, one being better than the other. It's a matter of their placement and programs that actually exist within those schools that are kind of tied to where they are, including a Parkland, Parkland group that comes over to Garden Hills to help out that I'm not sure would be able to transport themselves as easily to the location of the IPA. Also, there's a, it's a food bank, I believe, that operates out of there. And also, I don't, there's a pretty sizable percentage of Garden Hills kids who are walkers to school. And I'm not really loving the idea of trying to figure out a way for them to have to bus thirty to forty minutes every day. So anyway, just wanted to make sure that that was something that we talked about a little bit on the record. Thanks.
Also, don't Champaign schools at grade school level have schools of choice?
They do, and...
And so that eliminates someone wanting to go to school at Garden Hills in that area, too. It puts them on the other side of town.
Thank you very much, Mike and Connie. I know that last night's meeting was very heated. I know Charles was there, and a lot of the NAACP members were also there. It came out, and it was covered by the news today as well. So I believe it's an ESL program that's coming, it's an international ESL program, so...
Oh, Carrie Bucy School, they want the building. They don't necessarily want the neighborhood.
They had new building that was...
So, yeah, my thoughts was, why don't they go over and snatch Dr. Howard? It ain't quite finished yet.
And I, and I will say, Garden Hills kids with choice wouldn't actually even be able to go to IPA except for, I believe, it's kindergarten and first, unless they were dual-language, which I would probably wager that a lot of the kids in Garden Hills unfortunately are not. So these are kind of important things that we need to be keeping an eye on.
Well, thank you all for coming out. We're adjourned. How are you, young lady?
He didn't tell me. He just told me that John Richter was filling in for him. I didn't know that he was actually leaving, and that's why there was, he was going to have jobs fit in, but I didn't know. I, I would imagine, you know, I forwarded him some pictures I took from the screenshots of...
Hey, thank you, Esri.
From the board meeting last night. But I, so no, maybe it might be another meeting regarding that meeting from yesterday. It was all over the news this afternoon. And I saw Terry Townsend as well, too. He was there, and you know, so if the word got out in the community that this was happening, so they, he railed it for the most part.
Thank you, Megan, for all those copies. Thank you.
For what?
So thank you for your input.
Oh, thank you. How you been? I love the way she talks. I didn't even know he was listening, so he just started talking to me. Right.